Let me get the Worth County Board of Commissioners to come to order. We have a quorum and the accommodations are met. Mr. Joe, would you lead us in a word of prayer, please?
Yes, sir. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that you allowed us to see a new day, a day that we've not seen before. We're blessed in it, God, and we are highly favored of you. We thank you, God, that you're with us as we attempt to carry on the county business, help us to make godly decisions, a decision that's right for the constituents of this county. And, God, as you go with us in these meetings, God, we pray that your arm of protection be around us, that your guidance be within us, so that you will be pleased with the work that we do for this county. For it is in Jesus' name we pray, and we thank you for it now. Amen.
Stand up if you pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To take it with a bow and forth which stands, one nation, under God, in the bill of liberty and justice for all. Clerk called the row.
Commissioner Gaines.
Present.
Commissioner Sutton.
Here.
Chairman Cosby.
Here.
Commissioner Bozeman.
Here.
Commissioner McDonald.
Attorney Miller.
Present.
I'd like to welcome all of you this morning to our meeting. Does everyone have an agenda? At this time, we're going to a public hearing to discuss the 2013 and 2014 budget.
But, Commissioner Cosby, on your agenda, there's some mistakes on it.
Okay.
And I don't know which one we're supposed to go by, because one I picked up yesterday is different from the one for today. But the one that she brought me a while ago, under guest speaker, that should be Mr. Shaw apostrophe S. property. It says, "More gravel on Ephesus Road from Mobley to Gintown." That should be Etheridge Road, not Ephesus Road. Under old business, item number four, that should be approved sploosed, S.P.L.O.S.T., payment to Frank Barbie.
It said Etheridge Road from Mobley to Gintown. Is that correct?
Right. It's not Ephesus Road down there. It's Etheridge Road. Ephesus Road is in Mr. Sutton's district.
Right. Oh, this is splooshed payment to Frank.
Right.
Okay. Okay, you've heard the corrections. Is there a motion to accept the corrections?
No, certainly.
Okay. Have a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak to the board, told the budget for 2013, Yes, Mr. Sands?
Can I ring up now where I want to ring up about the...
We'll take care of that when we move into our regular business meeting. Okay, well, if there's not anybody that would like to address the board on the budget, we'll move forward into our regular business meeting.
Mr. Chairman, you've got to close the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll consider the public hearing closed, and we'll move into our regular hearing, regular meeting, excuse me. We don't have any minutes to approve at this time. We have several guest speakers this morning. Invite Ms. Tina Dorell. Is Mr. Dorell in the room? Mr. Sands?
Yes. Yes.
Will you come forward and address the board, please?
Right now, I have a neighbor, Mr. Shaw, that has dilapidated two mobile homes on his property that should be, I feel like, condemned by the commissioners. And I've got pictures here to show you all the condition of them. And that's that part. Then the other part is about what Mrs. Bozeman wanted up was getting some railroad rock on Gintown and down Mobley Road so it would be passable in the wet weather. The way it is now, it's very hard to get down.
Have you talked to John Merritt about putting some gravel on that road, sir?
No, sir. I talked to Mr...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McDonald talked to me about it, and also I talked to Mr. Sands about it. And I don't think the information has got transferred to John yet.
Okay.
Because Mr. McDonald was sick and...
Okay, his biggest thing is them mobile homes that are nothing but look like rat crack catchers and that there, and they're falling apart and not put together the double wide isn't, and he just use them for storage. And it's just nice sort of joke, and that's it.
All right, thanks, Mr. Sands.
Yes, Mr. Sands. A comment on Mr. Ed.
See here?
He's over in the corner right there.
Ed, if I could come forward and give us a little background or give us an update on some of this condemnation that Mr. Sands referred to.
I haven't been inside these mobile homes. I don't know if they're, they'll meet the health and safety standards required by the county. And I don't know if he's using these homes for a storage facility. If he is, that's against county ordinance. I can't give my recommendation on condemning a piece of property. We could get him to try to clean up the property. But if he's going to use these homes for dwelling, he'd have to meet the standards for the health and safety standards required by the county. Like I said, I haven't been inside these homes. I don't know the condition of these homes. We can ask Mr. Shaw to clean up his area around these homes and the dilapidated garments there.
I would say from what I'm seeing in these pictures right here, I don't think, I don't think even a, I don't think even a dog would own them. I mean, these things, I mean, they're eyesore.
We can ask him to demolish the homes, but, you know, if the homes are suitable for living, you could sell them. But, you know, a lot of homes can be fixed up.
I've got a big question about these.
Yes, sir. We have, we have a lot of people in the county that live in conditions that a lot of us wouldn't live in. But to condemn a piece of property, I can't see it unless I can go inside.
Right. Right. Mr. Chairman, can I address this? Yes, ma'am. Mr. Parsons, why can't you send him a letter and tell him? Give him 15 days to get something done about this mess.
I can send him a letter for nuisance, abate the nuisance.
Right. I mean, that's a mess.
This thing's been going on long before I came on the board with Mr. Shaw.
Since 2007, I can tell you now. I know what's going on there.
Mr. Miller, is anything we can do?
Well, if you contend that it violates an ordinance, identify which ordinance it does. You give the man notices in violation and an opportunity for a hearing, and then declare it to be a nuisance, and then you can proceed to clean it up if that's what the finding of fact is. But you've got to, you can't just generalize and say, "Well, this looks like crap. We've got to do something about it." We had to find the ordinance that's being violated. And that's what the zoning administrator and the code enforcement would have to look for. And never can. You just look at a thing and say, "Well, this looks bad. Let's do something about it." Well, all you can do about anything is enforce your ordinances. And you have to get to a specific ordinance, and you can't enforce one for vagueness if it's, "This just looks, in my opinion, like sloppy stuff, and it ought to be removed." That's too vague and indefinite to enforce anything. So you've got to find a specific ordinance that violates, give notice to them, an opportunity for hearing, and then you can proceed to abate the nuisance yourself. But you've got to, you've got to give a notice and an opportunity for hearing first.
I think it needs to...
And you can, of course, cite him in magistrate court also.
Right.
And there is a criminal penalty.
Right. I think the board needs to direct you to send a letter to Mr. Sands, so directing him to answer.
Mr. Shaw.
I mean, Mr. Shaw, I'm sorry. Mr. Shaw to get this, to answer as to how soon he can get this thing cleaned up out there. And I think about in 15 days is plenty enough time. I mean, this, from these pictures here, I tell you, fire department probably have a pretty good time out there fighting, burning those things down and get some training for fire, fire training out of these things. They don't even make good, wouldn't even make good fires with it. I mean, it's ridiculous.
Yeah. I don't think we can do that without getting approval from the EPD.
I know it could. But it's...
But I will pursue it with getting a letter out to him and see if I can meet him with that on the property and see what we can do with things going.
Suggesting, Mr. Chairman, that you identify the specific ordinance that he's violating.
Yes, sir.
And that you furnish that to the commissioners so that they know what they're attempting to enforce.
I don't know if you're, I don't know if your zoning board would need to meet with him to talk with him or if it has to come directly back to us. But I guess since you brought it to us, we're the ones that got to deal with it.
Right. Okay.
Okay, you'll take care of that.
I'll do.
All right, so thank you very much.
Sure.
Anybody got any questions from this area?
No.
Okay, good deal. Mr. Nesbit, would you like to come forward, sir?
Sir. Mr. Chairman, the commissioners, I'm here this morning to sort of clear the air a little bit about this Walmart's deal we had going with the EDA. They're not coming here right now, but it's not a failure to negotiate. That isn't the reason, I'm told by them. They had a clause in our, all they wanted to do is purchase land from us, which we were in the process of trying to do that. And it was moving along pretty well. But they have a 180-day feasibility period. During that time, in their contracts, they can drop it whenever they feel like it, just back out the deal. That's what they did. Shortly before they did that, I got a call from the real estate company that's representing them, and they had told me that they wanted to postpone it for 90 days. Five days later, I got a letter saying they just wanted to drop it altogether at this point in time. And I've had phone calls, people wanting to know, "Did the EDA have to give them back $5,000?" And the answer is no. We didn't give them back anything. They had a $5,000 deposit that they had made within their own organization. That's how that came about. So there's not much we can say. I called the real estate people directly and asked if there was a particular problem of any kind, and the answer I got was no. The answer I got was, apparently Walmart works, one division has this to deal with, another division has this to deal with. They finally had their meeting where all the boards come together, and the people that size the store threw up a red flag and said, "We think we've got the wrong sized store." So they're in a quandary now as to what size store they wanted to build. Now, that's quote, that's a direct quote from the real estate end of them. We don't talk to Walmart, per se. Our attorney has had a lot of communications back and forth because they required a lot of covenants and things of that nature that had to be dealt with. Some of those we challenged, and they backed off of most of them. They were unreasonable, some of them, but they did back off of them. But I have no other information other than the fact that they, at this time, have dropped, they're not going to pursue that property up there at this time. And you can negotiate, nobody could have did anything else to negotiate. There's nothing else to negotiate. Is there any other questions? That's all I know to tell you because that's all we know.
Well, it's real disappointing to lose a possible big retailer like them coming into county. And I know we hadn't lost them based on what you've said, but right now, they're kind of put it on the back burner. But it would certainly be nice to have a big retailer like that. I can just see a lot of nice sales tax money coming in that we really need.
Well, and so could the EDA. But there wasn't anything else we could have done. I mean, as an EDA entity goes, we basically don't deal with retail stores. There's nothing we can offer them, other than we'll sell them the land, you know, if we can agree on the price, which we did. It's basically in their ballpark. They just chose not to do it at this time.
So basically, what I'm hearing you say is, you may get a letter tomorrow and say that they want to do it again.
This is not an unusual thing with Walmart. They've done this before. And I think up in Albany, it took them almost two years before they finally came to fruition to do it, to do it. So this is sort of a track record for them. And there's nothing we can do. I just wanted to make it clear because I'm getting a lot of phone calls, and they aren't correct. Well, I know I heard it six weeks ago, and I didn't say anything. I heard it from a citizen here in the county, and they asked me about it. And I told them I was totally unaware that the EDA apparently was working on something. And then I heard it two weeks later from a member of the board, and then it started, you know, it started going like wildfire then, so... Well, all I can tell them is that we didn't do it. We didn't leak the information. I don't know where it came from, but it came from somewhere because we got, we've been getting phone calls from the first week after it started.
It would be nice, it would be nice to have a big sales tax producer here in the county. Sure would be, not only that, but the jobs they would bring in too, and the satellite companies and stores and businesses that could come in with them. That would be a very big plus for the county.
Well, if they should come back, I mean, the land's still there, so... They went so far as to do some test drilling up there. Core bores and such.
Do y'all have it in your, on your agenda to contact them back? Are y'all just going to sit and wait until they contact you guys or just what's the battle plan?
Please give us a little slack there, a little credit. We don't just drop things like that and throw them away. Yes, absolutely, I'll follow up on that. I'd be remiss in my job if I didn't do that. So I will let you know what I find out.
I didn't know how they, you know, I didn't know how they operated. If you called them up, they would totally completely close the doors, or if you just had to sit around and wait for them to get back with you?
I've got a contact that I can call and get information. I don't want to let that out because I'm not going to want everybody to be calling. That's the quickest way to kill the deal.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I come in? Mr. Nesbit, I understand what you're talking about on the retail sales. And I take a look at Tiff County over there, Tifton. Look at the retail they got over there, and look at their millage rate, it just went up three mil.
We were discussing that this morning over in the office. They went up three.
Three mils?
Yep.
So retail sales is not always the basic here.
Well, they have some other issues going on there somewhere. Something, something doesn't match up, but I've got to keep my nose out of that.
I understand.
I've got enough to deal with here. Is there any further questions along those lines of the Walmart?
Mr. Joe, you have any questions?
I don't have any. It's big, you got more questions?
Thank you.
One thing I want to say is the incentives that Tiff County and citizens, Tifton's given these companies to come in there, no tax base, giving away the buildings and all this stuff, has gotten in trouble. I don't want to see something come to Worth County where we get tax base.
As an EDA, we deal in industrial manufacturing and large distribution units. We don't, per se, deal with the retail store. Our only connection to that was the land itself. We had the land that they wanted. That's our only connection with it. All right, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dan.
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
On this issue, Mr. Nesbit touched on it, but at the highest levels of the planning for this organization, they are working on various theories about size of stores and whether to go into specialty things rather than have a general store where they sell everything, to concentrating on certain specialty stores. And at the top levels, there's a big experiment going on as to what kind of stores they will move into. And with that going on at top corporate levels, I would suggest that that's going to take plenty of time, and it's not likely any quick resolution of that issue as way down the road.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, as we move...
Excuse me.
Nothing. I thought you was going to make another comment.
Uh-uh.
Thank you, Mr. Dan. As we move forward with the agenda, I need to discuss the millage rate increase. It's been several years since Worth County even had any kind of a tax increase. And back in 2009, we did have a reassessment of property in the county. And at that time, the board chose to lower the millage rate and save the taxpayers dollars. But as time has progressed, cost of operating the government and services has increased. And now it's come down to the point where this county is going to have to do something to make up for the loss that we've had over the last two years. In talking with the tax commissioner, she's indicated to me that we've lost nearly $2 million over the last four years because of this adjustment in the millage rate back in 2009. And we've got a lot of things that's going on in this county. When we look at what's happened, we've got the Health Department that has had tremendous reductions in their budget. We've got the Recreation Department that's had a lot of cuts. We're looking at the Fire Department. We want to expand the Fire Department, and the money's not going to be there. Sheriff's Department. I mean, we need law enforcement in this county. I mean, I can go on and on and on. Public Works has four dump trucks out there that are absolutely worn out, and we're going to patch them. I talked with John Grady yesterday about the ambulances. He said the newest ambulance out there has over 75,000 miles on it, and the rest of them have in excess of 130 or 40,000 miles. Now, I know the ambulance service is very important in this county, and new ambulance cost around $140,000, maybe more, depending on how you get it equipped. But my concern is, if we ever call and that ambulance breaks down and we have to call for a second ambulance, I mean, we need to look at all this stuff, and we cannot do it where we're at now on the millage rate. It's my recommendations, I recommended in the last public hearing, to return the millage rate back to where it was back in 2009, and that would require 1.405 mil increase, not three mils like Tiff County had to do. But what we're doing is trying to get our back, base back where it needs to be at, and try to start to bring revenue back in this county where we can do things. And that's my recommendation, is to increase the millage rate by 1.405 mils. That would bring it back to 11.66 mils where it was in 2009. And I'd need a motion to take this action.
Mr. Chairman, I have to agree that we are really behind the eight ball, and we are in a situation now where we're not going to be able to sustain ourselves without some deep cuts or some layoffs or furloughs. We're in a situation where we had a great impact on the county early part of the year, causing over $5 million worth of damage to our roads and covers and everything. And we were not able to recover any of that from the state or from the federal government because the overall picture didn't add up to the amount of monies that they have to, that we have to have for the state or the federal government to enact any type of aid. So we're, we're absorbing that cost now, and it's really hurt our budget at Public Works, it hurt our surplus at Public Works, and the county at this point is on slow survival. And I think it is quite a need for a millage rate adjustment if we are going to survive. And that's the bottom line. We're looking at survival. We're not looking at anything that's excessive, or even with this rate increase, it's not going to give the departments everything they need to operate on. But it will subsidize them to a point where I think that we can give the citizens of the county proper healthcare, proper police protection, proper fire protection, and these departments have to run as efficient as possible. So I agree that the millage rate has to be increased. So I'm going to make a motion that we adjust the millage rate to a 1.405 mil increase, bringing our millage rate back to 11.66 where we were at in 2009. That is my motion.
Right. I hear a second. I'm going to second that motion. Send a discussion. All in favor of the millage rate increase, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
We have a tie vote?
I'd like to make a comment on my note. If y'all's increase was going for the Sheriff's Department, for the Fire Department, and for Public Works, I might go along with it. But this ain't nothing but to go back and pad and get some political stuff done. That's all this is about, and I'm not going to vote for a tax increase on the taxpayers to do political stuff. It's not going to help me. Can I say something?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Dan.
I don't know where to begin, but people don't realize that I've had a lot of calls myself at home, and most of my calls has been that we've been getting the service that I think that we need in this county, and most folks were opposed to a tax increase. And I'm a compassionate person, and I think that this county is like all the other counties in this country. We still in a mess, you know? And I think, you know, the wrong thing to do is try to get us out of it is the tax people. And that's what I stand for, is I'm not voting for no tax increase because I think that we can get along with last year's budget. We might not get everything that we want. Everybody might not get everything, you know? But a lot of places are not getting everything. We've got families in this county that's not getting everything, and they pay in taxes, and it's a tough decision. People don't really realize, you know? Y'all sitting out there, it's different than sitting up here. This is a very stressful, stressful job, and I'm doing the best I can, and I'm listening to the taxpayers, the people that contact me. That's what I'm going by, is people that contact me. And for that reason, where it's political, mine's not political. I don't know what. I hadn't heard that, and, you know, I'm not going there, but it's what I believe in, and that's where I stand. And y'all might all disagree, just like the other night, I had to get up and get out of that meeting because this thing is stressful. It's killing me up here, and I couldn't get my breath. And I tell you, that's why I walked out. And it's terrible, and I had to make decisions, and it don't affect me, but, you know, it affects my family, you know? And that's the reason that, you know, I can live with what we got, and I think this county can live with what we got. And that's all I am, Mr. Dan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matt. I want everybody to know that I am not a tax person. I do not like taxes, but since I have come on this board and as this thing has progressed forward, this is not a political issue for me. This is strictly an issue for providing the services this county that we need to provide. And since we've not had a tax increase for several years, the cost of operating this county has continued to go up, the value of property is going down, and without a tax increase, we're going to see services continue to drop in this county. And I don't know where Ms. Bozeman's getting her political from. This is not a political issue for me. This is not a political issue for me. When I ran for this office, I made nobody any promises except to do the job that was needed to be done on this board, and that's what I have tried to do since I've been on this board. And we're gonna table this until we can have a full board here when Mr. McDonald can return from his, get his health straightened out. He's at the doctor right now, getting examined about a kidney stone, and I hope that sometime in the next few days, he'll be able to come back on this board, and we can vote whether the county is going to have a tax increase or not have a tax increase, but this is gonna be tabled until such time as we can get Mr. McDonald back up here and have his voice heard.
Mr. Chairman, you would need to put into the record that the motion fails.
Awesome. We can't table it, right? If it fails, we can't bring it back up to the board.
I'll be bringing it back any time you choose.
Okay, I just wanna be sure about that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay, as we move forward, we need to try to get something straight with volunteers. I was out at Scoobville last night. We had two volunteers show up. They were older folks, but they were willing to do their part in what is gonna be needed down in the Scoobville area. But we still need to do something about an incentive program to bring these firefighters in. We talked about the BFIS Accident and Sickness Program and the Retirement Program to be paid for by the county for these volunteers coming in. I also think that we should have a, at the end of the year, we should have some kind of recognition dinner in December and do some monetary awards to outstanding volunteers and also to give some kind of monetary amount to the remaining volunteers. And I know this is something that has been discussed many times, and we just need to get serious on this thing because ISO rating ain't getting no lower, and our insurance rates are not going down, and we're gonna have to do something to get this thing straightened out.
Mr. Chairman, is this the packet?
This is the one I understand. I believe this is the one that I've got.
Well, what my packet says is BFIS Accident and Sickness Summary Coverage Prepared for the Worth County Board of Commissioners and its paper, and that's it.
It was in your last packet, the full packet, since he was just revisiting it. I just had it in my mind.
You got the full packet? That's full packet.
I got the packet that Tom and him took, I mean, already, but I don't have a packet like that.
I believe this packet was handed out. It's been handed out. I've got full packet in my office. I know it was handed out, but anyway, the cost...
Did you hear what I said? I did not get a copy.
I heard exactly what you said.
Okay.
Mike, do you copy that?
Yeah, copy one for her. Interested, please, ma'am. But this is something that we need to discuss. We discussed it at a workshop, and that's all that's basically been discussed, and every day that we delay is delay in getting this thing straightened out. And this is something that has got to be done because we're not gonna get people injured and go out unless they're getting something back for it. And we can't afford to pay them the $500, $600, $700 a year because it's gonna put them in, it's gonna basically put them on payroll, and we don't need any more folks on payroll. We need volunteers. That's what we're trying to get away from now. Mr. Joe, you have any comment on this?
I looked at the packet that we gathered before, and I know we do need to go and institute this. It was my understanding that we were in agreement to do this, but we hadn't took official action.
Right, right.
We just need to do that today.
Okay. Mr. Mack, you got it?
I don't have it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Okay. Ms. Bozeman, you got any further comments?
No, because I don't want incentives on them.
I just, I just, I just told you what they were. I mean, the Accident and Sickness Program and the Retirement Program.
Yeah, but you gotta be putting any figures out here?
Well, I know the Retirement Program is $25 a month.
Per person?
Per person, yeah. It was 15, but I understand it has gone up to 25. Captain Tom, is that...
July 1st.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's per volunteer?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. I mean, we can work it where they can pay half, we can pay half, but some counties are paying, and volunteers are paying in other counties. But this is a good program. This Retirement Program is an excellent program. After 10 years, you're vested, and if you retire, I don't know exactly what the figures are, but...
10-year vested, 15, you can go out early, full 25.
Do you have an idea of what the, you have an idea of what the...
The payout.
The payout would be after 10 years?
The payout is usually half of what the full 25 is. They're saying roughly now 25's about 980.
Mm-hmm.
So if you go out at 15, you're looking at half of that, roughly.
About 450, something like that. Which is a good program to go in and pay in a little and get a lot back.
That's right.
Sure is. But we need to go ahead and try to get some basic figures. Of course, we don't know how many volunteers we're gonna have. That's the issue. And you've got how many in training now?
We've got 10.
So y'all lost a couple?
We've lost a couple.
Okay, okay. How about the guy that got overheated out there? How's he doing?
He's all right. We're waiting to get him here back from his personal doctor.
Okay.
He's supposed to be writing us some paperwork in.
Okay, is he gonna, is he gonna stay on board? Okay, good deal. So if we have these 10 come in, that'll be $250 a month, but we don't know how many more we're gonna be able to get. And some of the folks will come in and they won't, some of the older folks, they won't be interested in doing it, but the younger people are who we need to be looking at. So the cost is going to change almost every month with what's going on. Okay, we'll continue to revisit this until we can get something squared away. At our last meeting, we discussed the Sumner Fire Station, and that was some discussion at that time that indicated that there was some conflict between the board and the City of Sumner. And I know they have built that station, and they've made a big investment out there. And I think myself, even though the contract was not properly voted on in the board, we're gonna have to do something. And as all of y'all heard, we ended in a tie today with the increase in the military rate, and I've thought about this a long time since Mayor Long came to the board, trying to figure out what we needed to do to meet the obligations of that fire station. And if we don't get this increase, we're gonna have to make some adjustments. And my recommendation is that one member from each shift at Headquarters Company be reassigned to the Sumner Fire Station. And I think that those personnel that are reassigned to the Sumner Fire Station need to live in the Sumner area. I don't know how many guys you have there, Captain Tom?
We've got several.
So we need to reassign at least three of those guys down to the Sumner Fire Station. And I know that Mayor Long mentioned about a fire, another fire engine. Of course, we're not in a position to purchase a new fire engine, and I think that the logical move for fire engine would be to move that fire engine from Isabella. Isabella has fire protection from the Headquarters Company as well as from the City of Sylvester, and their fire protection would not go down based on those fire protection offered by you guys and the City of Sylvester. And that's my recommendation. And there's...
Mr. Chairman, let me say something to you.
Yes, ma'am.
You need to check on this grant that paid for that fire station, for that fire truck out of Isabella and see if it can be moved. I don't know if we're still under that timeframe or not. Did you, Tom?
No, ma'am, I'm not.
I'm not. I'm not familiar on the term.
Was the grant to the Worth County Fire Department?
The grant was to the Worth County Fire Department for the Isabella Station.
Well, I would think since the Isabella Station is under the Worth County Fire Department, I think we can move that truck.
Well, you'll find out on these government grants whether you can move them around or not. That's why we can't get a grant for a fire truck now because of this big deal to get three at one time, and we are still under, no fire trucks from the federal government. And that wasn't here in my watch, neither, because I knew better.
Captain Tom, do you have that grant down at the fire station, or do we have it up here?
It should be up here.
Okay. Ms. Weedy, would you check on that grant and see what the status is as far as movement of that fire truck around the stations where it's needed to go to? And see what, may need to make some phone calls. I don't know what it may say in the grant itself, but if you will pull that so I can take a look at it. That grant was written when?
2002, I believe.
Two. That's been over 10 years.
It was 2002, and we received a truck, I'm thinking, right at the end of 2002.
It should, most of the grants have a 10-year period on it, but another may be a 20-year. Who knows? So we will readdress this at the next meeting.
And let me say, I don't have a problem pulling the truck to Sumner since we're within a five mile, in fact, we're three miles from the main station down here to Isabella. I don't have a problem pulling the thing, I just don't wanna get in trouble with the federal government about this.
Well, we don't wanna get in trouble with feds either, but you know, at this point in town, that would be the logical truck to move because Isabella is under...
That would be the ideal truck.
Right.
It's a Class 8 1250 pump.
Yeah, yeah. And that would satisfy the needs at Sumner. And then the other, the second man would have to come from part-time, be to the back of, and that would be a scheduling, that would be a scheduling nightmare.
Right, we've got some hurdles to cross, but the main thing is we're still doing the new ISO changes, two trucks for me.
Right.
We've got two on two.
Right.
Regardless if the call goes out, both trucks will respond.
Yeah, yeah.
That way we're covered.
If we can get, if we can get the City of Poland to respond with us out in that area, we can get that ISO rating down in that area where it needs to be, and then we can overcome the rest of the county. And, but that would be, that would be my recommendation until we find out specifically about this fire engine, and we'll pursue this at the next meeting and make sure that we can do what we need to do. I know they haven't a grant, they have this ribbon cutting on the A, so...
And Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we go ahead and take that unit down there for their grant open, and let it stay there till we get a clarification on where it can stay.
All right. That's good. We have a second on that?
I have a second, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. We'll do that, and Captain Tom, if you'll, if y'all will take care of that and work on the scheduling and let us know what guys you're gonna move down there. One of those will be paid for by the City of Sumner, and the other two will be paid for by the county.
Okay.
And then, of course, part-time guys, they'll be paid for by the county, too. And the benefits for three full-time guys will be paid for by the county. So y'all take care of that, let us know what, how this is done. We sure would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Okay, we're gonna move now to look at the payment on the splash, pay Mr. Frank Barbie for appraising the property on the Hall Road and Davis Mill Road, and that total amount is $3,150.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the splash application to pay Frank Barbie, the appraiser, for the condemnation, I mean, for the assessment, for the appraisal of the property on Hall Road.
So now for left second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, our next item of business is the Motor Roller Service Agreement at E911.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve that thing. It's a routine thing, we do it every year. Thirty thousand dollars each.
Yes, ma'am. Thirty thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-six cents, and this was already figured into our 2013-2014 budget, and I have Mr. Stephen Woodham here with all many communications if there's any questions on what this contract covers. The contract that we were currently under expired June 30th, so as it stands right now, until this contract is covered, we're not covered on our equipment.
Okay. It's routine, we do this every year?
Yes, ma'am, it is routine. We do it every year, but since there's some new members on the board, we brought it back in the event there were any questions.
Okay, all right. You make that motion, Ms. Bozeman. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now you need this. Okay, we need to approve the resolution to continue to work under the fiscal year 2012-2013 budget.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about this.
Okay.
In my packet, it says that this was approved on the 28th day of June 2013. You signed it, and I protested. You can't do this. You cannot do a resolution unless you've got three members of this board up here that approve it. And now you want us to go back and approve something that you've already done on the 28th, and I'm not gonna do it.
Ms. Bozeman, this needs to take care of so the county business can move forward. Is it the first time? This isn't the first time a contract...
You need to read the law.
This isn't the first time a contract or resolution's been signed and approved at the next board meeting. You know that's where it's at.
No, sir, I don't know of another resolution that's been done without it coming before the full board.
Well...
And you don't have that authority.
We can do another one, I can sign it today, but it needed to be signed so that this county's...
Why don't you have a call meeting, Chair? You could have had a call meeting to do this.
Ms. Bozeman, I just can't understand why you want to make a complete issue out of this.
Because I'm not going to jail about this kind of stuff. That's exactly mine.
Mr. Miller, would you like to comment on this, please?
Well, anytime that an emergency comes up, the chairman can make an effort to have a phone call, which can be temporarily binding until the next meeting, and then if it's approved, it's session at the next meeting. approved, in session at the next meeting. But clearly, any resolution the board has to have approval of a majority of those who are present. I mean, I'll say there's no such thing. But as far as when one can be approved, this needs to be approved. It could be approved today, but in future, as far as emergency, if it is an emergency and some thing is going lacking, and that effort can be made, the commission, well, all the commissioners being polled, and if they approve it on a phone poll, then it can be temporarily enforced until the next meeting when it can be made permanent. But that's the only way to do it.
Okay. All right. Okay.
If you need the resolution or propose it today or approval today, you can do that.
Okay. All right. All right, so well, that's what we'll do. We'll... Ms. Whibley, do you have a blank copy of this?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Can you get a copy of that resolution, please?
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting on that, I got a question.
Okay.
There's been an ad running in the paper for this same thing that we got our thing on this morning about the striping of the roads.
Mm-hmm.
But there's no opening time on that. It says it has to be turned in at 4:30 on such and such a day, but then there's no opening time. And those type bids have to have dates on them and times that you're going to open.
I believe that ad was put in the paper by Public Works Department. I did not see that. I did not see that ad. I instructed all these folks to send these ads up your...
Public Works has never done that before. I don't know why they're doing it now. All ads have always come out of the clerk's office.
Right, right. I don't know quite what they did one night. I talked to John about it, and I understand that it's going to be an opening day on that.
There's not enough...
All right, if we go back to this resolution. The resolution states that whereas Worth County operates with the fiscal year budget begins on July 1 and ends on June 30, and whereas Worth County's current budget will expire on June 30, 2013, and whereas Worth County has developed a proposed budget and is submitted to the public for review on June 17, 2013, and whereas Worth County is scheduled to meet on July the 2nd for the purpose of a second public hearing on the need to increase the military rate for Worth County, which will dictate the outcome of the 2013-2014 budget. Should our resolve that Worth County should continue to operate under the fiscal year 2012-2013 budget until such time as a new budget is adopted. This resolution is adopted 28th day of June 2013. I need a motion to accept this resolution.
Make a motion that we accept the resolution with the change of date.
Okay.
With the date changed to affect the current, the current date of release.
July 2nd. July 2nd. That's correct. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All in favor? Did you vote, Ms. Bozeman?
You'd have a vote on this.
Okay. Okay, motion passes. Motion passes with the change of date. We move forward with the commissioner's agenda. Mr. Cho, do you have anything?
I've got the address, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mack?
Yes, I have an issue out on Sallard Road that I'm just bringing this up now, that know that I'm going to try to get a hold of people, all that's involved in that situation out there. And I'm going to try to get it before the board, our next meeting. That road being closed out there, I don't know what to call it, temporary, what to call closed, but anyway, when I was carrying the mail, I've been out four years retired, and it's pivot going across the road that some people are still using, that's getting access out from that, from their home, getting to a pay road and just because of going the other way, it got a slick hill. And there's some issues with some families there that, and I'm going to try to get a hold of all families that would be involved in that decision and notification of our next meeting and let them be here and present their side, if that's okay. That's all I have to say.
Is the pivot actually crossing the road?
Yes, it's crossing the road, the people's traveling.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Sallard, I remember that closure, but it's not the whole road. The whole road wasn't closed. It was a portion of the road.
Well, a portion of it. It's been private all the time, Miss Sallard, you know. Part of it comes off Ed's Drive and goes up to where Miss Susan Sallard used to live. Okay, then her daughter, well, it's not a daughter, it's a grandchild, I think it was, Miss Willis, Rachel Willis, she got the house when, you know, when Miss Sallard died. So it passes her house, goes on down there to where Jimmy Bryan's place starts, where his road, where it starts. It's all Sallard Road from, all the way from Ed's Drive all the way over to Chapman Road is Sallard Road. But it was private there. Once you got to her yard, coming from Ed's Drive to her yard, it had a sign down there, "Don't scrape beyond this point," which was front of her house down there, probably, probably two, three hundred yards, you know. Had another sign coming in this way, "Do not scrape beyond this point." So once in a while, when I was carrying the mail, they would scrape that when they were the farmer, you know, when they, who was working that farm, would come through there with equipment, tear the road up so you couldn't hardly get on the private part of it, you know. But anyway, they somehow, they tore the house down, and now, I went through there one morning, and the road had been planted, you know, and I thought, God knows, you know. I thought, man. But from my time, from then on, I kept going around, just figuring back around, but people that lived down there and had to get out, they had a choice, come out Ed's Drive, either go out through, you know, Miss Susan Sallard's road, which is called Sallard Road. That's where they went most of the time, especially when it rained a lot and roads and all that. But anyway, we got some conflict there and now, you know, people, you know, I don't know where the roads ever closing on. I mean, I don't know where they had a public hearing, you know.
Yeah, the public hearing and everything was showing me, because I remember Miss Ellis, that she comes out on, I'm calling it, I don't know what the name is.
Right, it comes out right in there where Miss Susan's in, right there. That's where Jones are and Miss Gaver and Ellis, right. But I don't know, you know, I don't know where it's been, if it's been closed then.
2007, 2008, where'd you go from?
Well, you know, if that's the issue, then I've asked people that's involved in this, they said, well, it's never been, I've never been to it here. So that's where I stand, that's where I did some checking, filing, what's going on.
The proper procedure was, okay, well, I'll check into that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, we'll address that at the next board meeting. Ms. Bozeman, do you have any time?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to address Reverend Stokes. He's out here. We voted this morning to pay for the appraiser that appraised the property up on Hall Road, Blue Springs Church. Mr. Miller's working on the other. As soon as we get the other stuff done, then I'll be in touch with you. Okay?
Okay, Mr. Billy is out, for reasons, so we'll just proceed on to... There's no personnel considerations. We do need to go into executive session for a few minutes, discuss a couple of issues. There's no acknowledgements from Mr., but would you have any?
The only thing that's still going on right now, Mr. Chairman, is a dispute with Tratt and over the settlement of that Jackson case, and we're still having a long dispute with them about not paying that last invoice they sent us. It hasn't been resolved yet, but we're not paying it, and our recommendation is simply let them sue us if they, if they can't understand where we're coming from.
Right, right. Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, before we move out on all this stuff, we were supposed to make a decision on our property, casualty, and auto insurance. We're supposed to have done that the other night with a meeting that continued after the public hearing. We, I guess we operate with no insurance right now. It expired July 1. I guess y'all got a binder on it.
We got a binder on it.
Yes, we got a binder. We did. But Mr. Gaines and I met with the train, and we went over all the stuff on those insurance bank. And there is a recommendation. Am I correct, Mr. Gaines?
Yes, ma'am. There's a recommendation.
Yeah, that was left off of the agenda, quite obviously. But we did get a binder on that, and we do need to move forward with that, with that approval. Do you make a motion, Ms. Bozeman, that we accept the...
We're going with the...
Oh, items payable under $2,500, up to $2,500.
We're taking off.
We're taking off of the coverage, because once you pay your $1,000 deductible and then pay the premium, it's not financially feasible for us to keep that, keep that on. And we've taken off the fire towel that was on there.
The water tank from there, too, Captain.
The water tank, that's about it.
That's what he's talking about, just the water tank out there. How in the world that ever got on the county's insurance? I'll never know. I will never know.
So the policy should reflect those changes?
Yeah.
See, we weren't insured and stuff for $1,000, and our deductible is $1,000, so we were losing money. And I think, Mr. Gaines, what's the name of that insurance company that was going to do the inventory?
You mean the reevaluation or the...
Yeah, they were going to do reevaluation inventory.
There wasn't one beacon, it was the other.
Yeah, it's a...
Anything is on Mariah or something, Mariah One or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we chose to go with that because of the appraisal.
And they will appraise all the property, it won't cost the county any...
And then we can take the appraisal and have the adjustment to the premium that we saw if we want to...
Or we can drop them and go back to beacon.
Yeah, we can keep, we can keep, but we don't have to accept the appraisal. We can keep their bid, but if we do accept their appraisal, the premium will increase accordingly.
Yes, according to value.
Right, right, right. So...
I make a motion that, you be sure you get the spelling right on the insurance company that hits Mariah One or something like that.
Yes, ma'am.
I can't, I can't remember that name from that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before you say that, you need to amend your agenda. You bring it up another item, it's not only the agenda.
My suggestion we amend, then put the insurance on that.
Okay, all right.
Under old business.
Was it voted on motion to amend?
Yes.
And then you go ahead with your new motion.
Same motion, that we go with Mariah One, I believe it is, insurance. You just be sure that you get that spelling right.
That's a crazy name. Okay, all in favor of moving forward to the insurance, to the new company? We'll go by Mariah One right now until we know differently. All in favor?
Aye.
Have that name in there so we can make sure we got it right.
I thought I did.
Get the clerk to go find it. My case from that somewhere. Give them this given name.
In fact, we have a packet on the line.
See, what we're going to do is start to come up like this, there was a notation made. This needs to be on the next agenda approved.
You weigh off. Muncie Rea.
Muncie Rea instead of Brian.
Where'd they come up that name at, I'm... I'm going to get that name, Muncie Rea. Under our announcements, the Public Works will host the annual fishing rodeo on July the 13th at 1:18 Rebecca Drive from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Commissioner Gaines, Commissioner McDonald, and myself will attend the ACCG train at Callaway Gardens, July the 10th through the 13th. And the next scheduled quarter, Commissioners' meeting will be held on Thursday, July the 18th, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. We will probably have a call meeting to discuss this budget as soon as Mr. McDonald's help allows him to come back up here, but that's the view, seeing when that would take place. We need to go into executive session, client, attorney-client privilege. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay. Have a second?
Until I guess if you have not had an opportunity to sign it, please do so before you leave.
Vote on the motion, go into...
Yes, sir.
But in the meantime, we could take a ten minute break.
We appreciate all of y'all coming to the meeting this morning. It's always good to see a large number of citizens here. We invite you to continue to come.